Good evening, everybody. Tonight is December 14th, 2022 at 6:35 PM. And I'd like to call to order the Columbus City Council meeting for tonight. Our first order of business will be to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join if you care to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to Letter B is the Consent Agenda. And I'll make the motion to approve. Is there a second?
This is Sue. I'll second.
Is there any discussion or questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll call for a roll call vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jessie, aye. We're moving on to Letter C, which is Public Open Forum. Is there anyone here or online who would like to speak of Public Open Forum? All right, moving right along. We're on to Letter C, number 10. Animal Control Ordinance. And in our packets, it's pages 22 to, or 22-10. Is Britt here tonight or online?
I am here.
All right, good, thank you. All right, everybody grab your packets and go ahead, Britt.
So I was asked to review your ordinances, which is standard part of our contract, and that was completed a few months ago and submitted. And your clerk reached out and just asked me to attend the meeting in case you had questions. So I don't have any specific items of presentation just available for questions.
Thank you.
This is Janet. I actually, I have a couple of questions, Britt. Or maybe this is really for the staff first. One of the things that we had talked about a year or so ago, we had an application for a doggy daycare boarding facility. And it brought to bear a lot of areas of our ordinance that were lacking. We ended up putting a lot of conditions into that conditional use permit because it didn't, our ordinances didn't address it. Did anybody go through and compare the conditions in that CUP with what's in our ordinance to make sure that we got the right language in there? I mean, I looked at what Britt had suggested, but I didn't see some of the things that were in that CUP. And I think that the intent was to try to get them into the ordinance so that we didn't have to do that with any other CUP that came through.
You know, this is Elizabeth Marisco, city administrator. I think in this particular case, Britt was going to go through first, and then you'll have staff go through it again. This run-through was really more for animal control to really look to see if there was anything that they needed in order to do their job. And then we can work collaboratively with her on perhaps CUP and other things. So this was the first go-through with Britt, and I think we can do that as a second phase.
Okay. And then I did have a couple of other specific questions. So I'm looking on page 4-19, and it defines what an owner is. And so I'm just curious, how does this pertain to somebody who has a dog as a foster? It doesn't really meet our definition of owner. And I'm curious, because I happen to do that. I'm wondering if we need to add anything in to include that sort of quasi-ownership.
This is Britt. I don't have the document in front of me at the moment. I'm out on calls, but could certainly add language pertaining to fostering. Generally, owner definitions go as broadly as just an animal that's harbored. So we can't, in that circumstance, and we can avoid somebody saying they're, you know, caring for someone else's dog, and they're over the limit. It's basically, as long as they're on the property and they're being harbored there, then we can qualify that as ownership. So we could get more specific with that language.
Okay, well, I'll leave that up to you. I just was curious if that needed to be specifically called out. And then the other question I had is on the definition of restraint. I was wondering whether we need to call out electronic restraints. I mean, I get the fence probably includes invisible fence, but then there are people who use other types of electronic restraints, and I didn't see that in that definition.
We could, yeah, certainly review that to add that generally. If we're going to go into specifically restraint, we would want to differentiate between verbal restraint and electronic. Because you'll have individuals that'll say that the dog will recall when told to, and then other individuals that use an e-collar for recall. So we could get more specific with that as well.
Okay. And then under section 4-612, where it says vaccination required, I wondered whether or not we wanted to add to the last sentence, every owner is required to retain and produce a proof of vaccination. Doesn't do much good to retain it if they can't produce the evidence that the dog is vaccinated or cat.
I think that's implied by retain. If you retain something for the purpose of licensing, it would be to produce it. So.
Okay.
I mean, we can certainly, it doesn't hurt to add that, but that's the intent.
And then the last question I had has to do with shelter. So we don't have a definition of a shelter as it pertains to dogs. We have a definition of a shelter as in like a dog impound shelter, but not a shelter in terms of like a dog house. Like, what does that mean? And the reason I bring this up is because I think that we, on page 4-23, it talks about that a shelter needs to, you know, be at least four inches off the ground and blah, 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 all those sort of requirements. But I think there are different kinds of shelters. I mean, there are dogs that are outside most of the time, and the shelter really needs to be able to provide all the things that we're talking about here. But then there's shelters like what's in my dog's kennel, which is, they don't stay outside for more than a few hours. They run in there to lay down in the shade or whatever, but it doesn't have a door, it doesn't have all the stuff that this has. So again, I just think it might be good if we added a definition of a shelter, what the purpose of it is, or when it's required, you know, if the dog is outside for more than some number of hours or in inclement weather or something like that. There needs to be a shelter that meets the definition of kind of what you have here. Otherwise, you know, somebody came and looked at the dog houses in my dog kennel, it would meet this, but that's because they don't stay out there for, I mean, it isn't intended to meet that. So that, do you see what I mean?
Yes, I get what you're saying. I would want to review state statute. We do have a fair amount of animal welfare laws within state statute that might answer some of that definition, but we could definitely review it in more detail, make sure it's compliant.
Okay. And then the last thing I, the last question that I had is, when Mark was the Animal Control Officer, I know he mentioned that there were some changes that needed to be made in our ordinance in order for him to enforce the way he would like to enforce. And I just didn't know if we ever got any more specifics from him about what he was referring to. I know that he said, or he said to me anyways, that, you know, there were some places that he went to that he would have liked to have said, no, no, you need to do it this way, or you need to make these changes, but he couldn't because our ordinance didn't call it out. And so if we hadn't gotten that from him, that might be helpful to just reach out. I know that he's not our animal control person anymore, but I think he might still have, be willing to share that insight with us.
I could reach out to Mark and ask him that as well.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you. I know you know him, so that'd be good. Those are all of my questions.
Anybody else have concerns or questions? So would someone like to make the motion?
Are you, just for clarification, are we going to hold this over to add all of those items? And if we are, then there would be no further discussion or motions? I would just bring it back to the next meeting.
I think that's what I would like to do, if that's all right.
Mr. Mayor, let's get a consensus of the council.
Pardon?
Yes.
We need a consensus of the council.
Yeah, I know, I'm just weighing in on what I would like to do.
Right.
Yes, I agree.
All right. Everybody good?
Yep.
All right.
Good evening, city council members, city staff. My name is Bob Behrens with the Planning Commission. I would like to provide the city council with an update on the most recent activities of the Planning Commission meeting dated December 7. Other than the normal administrative duties at the last meeting, the Planning Commission specifically reviewed the following. We had a public hearing related to the Bonfire Farmstead preliminary plat. The Planning Commission hosted a public hearing to consider a request for preliminary plat creating two reconfigured lots in the Highway Commercial District. Classic Construction, basically the contractor for Blaine Brothers Truck Line, submitted the request, and members from both Classic and Blaine Brothers were present and testified at the hearing. The commissioners heard testimony on the preliminary plat, asked questions, and provided feedback to the applicants related to the proposed project. The public was allowed to provide comment, and no comments were received during that public hearing. Hence, that part of the public hearing then was closed. And we opened a new public hearing with the same developer, Bonfire Farmstead, for a conditional use permit for a planned unit development. Once again, creating two reconfigured lots in the Highway Commercial Zoning District to build a Blaine Brothers Truck Line business. Classic Construction is the contractor, and they submitted the permit request. And members of both Classic and Blaine were present and testified at the hearing. The commissioners heard testimony from the developers to allow an indoor vehicle services and repair facility, indoor sales and storage of truck, trailer supplies and parts, and outdoor storage of vehicles and equipment for a new business providing a full-service frame, suspension, and alignment facility for both trucks and trailers. The commissioners asked several questions to the developer, mostly related to questions around parking, landscaping, outdoor storage, and also screening. And so the commissioners, at that point then, will review more detail in the application at our next Planning Commission meeting, December 21st, 2022. We then closed that public hearing and opened yet another public hearing related to proposed 2023 fee schedule. The commissioners heard testimony from the city's associate planner related to the proposed fee structure for the year 2023, which included building department fees, community and senior center fees, tobacco licensing, park fees, planning and zoning fees, and public utility fees. After a short discussion, the Planning Commission approved the proposed fee structure and draft ordinance, and recommends to the city council to consider for approval. And that was the extent of our meeting. Are there any questions?
I have, this is Sue, I have a question on the fee schedule, so I don't know if you can answer the question on this. So I was looking through, and looking through all the increases, they were minimal percentages, all within reason of, you know, increase of normal prices. But we added nuisance abatement inspection, $60 per visit. And I don't know who, who does that get charged to?
So the way that it was written into Minspec's contract was that they would bill us hourly. And in this case, it was, it was $60. It's actually not per visit, but per hour. And I think that's why that was added.
So is, maybe I missed part of what you said. So when somebody makes a nuisance complaint, then Minspec goes out or whoever?
And we got charged, meaning the city got charged that hourly rate.
Okay. So then we would charge that back to?
No, that was, last year, we put in the budget $12,500 to cover that expense.
Oh, okay.
So.
So we're not going to charge the people who either made the complaint or getting complained against?
Yeah, that they, public, you know, public nuisance generally comes out of the general fund. And we had a mix. We had a mix of $8,000 in the CSO budget, you didn't mean to do some of them. And then for the more complicated ones, we had Minspec do those, but it was at an hourly rate. So I'm not sure why it says per visit, because it's, it's an hourly rate.
It should be per hour. Okay.
It should be per hour.
Okay, thank you. That was the only question I had.
Actually, I had a question on the same thing, but it kind of goes along the, with a little different line. So is this, is this to charge, so if you end up, hello, if you end up going through an abatement process, is this to allow you to charge that inspection fee back to the person who had the abatement?
If it's, yes. If it's an, if it's an abatement, yes. So in this particular case, if you remember, we didn't have anything in our fee schedule, and so we were not able to charge back for the inspections that we did for the abatement. So we had the nuisance hourly fee, and that's $65 an hour. And you're right, this one is an abatement inspection, but it is an hour, not a visit.
And then I just have one other typo kind of thing, so on page eight, it still says township approval, just a holdover from the old days. Should be city approval, right?
And, yes, in which line?
Permit renewal within six months of expiration. So it's about, I don't know, six lines up from the bottom? Eight lines up from the bottom? It says township.
Yeah, two, three down from the red, strike out.
Yep.
Yes, I see that.
Anything else to add, anyone? All right.
So this is Rob. I just had a couple of things. In regards to the screening on the backside of that Blaine Brothers, what was kind of the consensus? I was able to weigh in, but it wasn't till a bit into the meeting. So there was talk about screening, and I believe the applicant had asked about, you know, possible crime and things of that nature.
Right.
What kind of came of that?
Yeah, so we really just kind of requested more information in detail for the next meeting. But essentially, as you state, Rob, it was more designed around trying to conceal any outdoor storage exposure by using screening. And in particular, we were talking about dismantled parts, for example, that would go in a dumpster. And so it was in the east side of the building, which, as you know, the building proposed is facing the highway. And so on the backside then would be the dumpster area, screened-in area. And we were also talking about the elevation of the road, because as you know, the road is somewhat higher than the ground level. And so we wanted to make sure that we understood what the screening would look like related to the traffic coming in from the road. So.
Okay.
You know, it was just kind of general questions, trying to get a better feel for how they were proposing to adhere to certain criteria.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
This is Janet. I think Dean was going to work with them on a new sort of plan that they were going to be bringing back next week.
Sure, sure. Because I think what the applicant had said is, you know, and I think another one spoke up, was they were worried about the crime.
Right.
And I think the one just to the north had said that they'd had stuff stolen. And I know that just south of Love's, they moved out because of crime, so, and they moved to Shisago City. So I know that's a big concern in that area, so.
Landscaping was also a concern at that point, because then they thought too much landscaping would actually hinder the ability to have secure facility. And so we talked through that. And once again, they were going to work with Dean to come up with a solution.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. So I guess I will make the motion to approve Ordinance 2212 of the Columbus Fee Ordinance as presented.
With two changes.
With two changes.
Oh, sorry. With two amendments to it.
First of all, for the nuisance abatement inspection, it should be $60 per hour instead of visit. And the other one is on, under other inspections and fees, where it says permit renewal within six months of expiration. In parentheses, it says township, and it should say city.
Thank you. And is there a second?
This is Shelley, I'll second it.
Any other questions or discussions? I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jessie, aye. And I'll also make a motion to approve a publication summary for Ordinance 2210 as presented with the corrections. Is there a second?
This is Sue, I'll second.
Any other questions or discussions?
It's 2212.
I'm sorry, what did I say?
2210.
Oop, 2212. I'll call the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jessie, aye. All right, let's move on. In our additions, there's a motion to approve continued service for Ron Hanegraff as member of the Planning Commission, and that's A1 in our additions. Elizabeth, would you like to re-explain to everyone, please, what we have to do?
At our last elections, council-elect Ron Hanegraff was successful in his election to be on the city council. He has served for the Planning Commission chair for four years, I think, and done a wonderful job. And we, at the current time, have a Planning Commission of five members. We received submissions of resignation by one member, and we received, there are two members that are end of term. Ron Hanegraff is at end of term, and so is another member, Chris King. And they've indicated to us that they would not like to be reappointed, and rightfully so, Ron will be on the city council. However, because there's only five members going into the end of the year, we do need to continue service and still manage the application workload. In this case, if we lose three members and there's only five, we won't have a quorum. And so we just appointed a new member at the last council meeting. Frank did have his first meeting with us, and so it was a good meeting. He had two hearings, so he got to listen to a lot of testimony for his first meeting. So in light of that, we discussed amongst personnel committee and city staff, what could we do? Because we knew that first quarter, it would be hard to have someone come in and take on the chairmanship and be able to run meetings and do all that sort of thing. So Ron has graciously indicated that he will, would be willing to do it for first quarter. And so our attorney indicated to us that we could adopt a resolution in order to have Ron serve on the Planning Commission as the chairperson as an interim measure until he could take measures to interview and appoint new members. And this is without, and we have tried to get Planning Commission members, we have had an ad out for one year, because we had a vacancy since last year. And so we have not really had a whole lot of interest, even though I know Connor has that on the website on the sign. We've called people, we've asked people, and so we've just not had an overabundance of applications. Since then, we have received some applications. We continue to interview them, and so hopefully we'll be able to have five members or have an alternate idea of how we want to do the makeup on the Planning Commission after the organizational meeting in January. But for the time being, this is a kind of an interim measure so that we can continue to process applications. We do have applications for January 4th, so it's not like, you know, we don't have anything. We do have work to be done. And so this was the best remedy for that. Questions from the council?
Anybody? Nope. So what will the resolution number be on this one?
This will be 35.
So I did have a question. This is Rob. So in the event that during that quarter, someone was to step up and say that they wanted to be the chair, or would we, we as a council, appoint somebody to that chair position to relieve Ron of that extra duty? Or would he just serve out that whole quarter?
Mr. Mayor and council, what would likely happen is you would appoint a new Planning Commissioner from the applicants, and then the commission would select the chair. I believe that's how it's been done.
Okay.
So that's how the turnover would occur, and then Ron could decide to step down, or he could actually finish his term based on this resolution.
Within that quarter?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious on the procedure there, on how that works.
All right. Any other questions? Then I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2235, approving continued service for Ron Hanegraff as a member of the Planning Commission. Is there a second?
This is Sue, I'll second.
Any other questions? I'll call for the vote.
Sorry, Ron. Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jessie, aye.
Thank you, Ron.
Yeah, thank you, Ron.
So now you get to come every Wednesday night. Lucky you. All right. Flip your pages over, everybody. Number 12 on top, Presentation, Public Comment, and Motion on our Final Levy and our Budget, Pages 2, 3, and the 23, Capital Budget Enclosure. So Elizabeth, would you like to start?
Mr. Mayor, I have a prepared presentation just as an introduction of our budget process. Afterwards, we will take public testimony or any input they have on the budget, and then we'll have a discussion up at the, between council members. Anything else that council members want to add before I begin? Okay. I am pleased to present the 2023 City of Columbus budget. Earlier this year, in August and September, city staff, advisory boards, the mayor, and city council members had several meetings during, several meetings discussing budget goals and priorities. The 2023 budget was mindful of financial challenges that both the city and taxpayers are faced due to rising costs of services and goods, due to inflation while making sure the city maintains existing assets, provides services, and investing in the city council initiatives. The 2023 budget addresses the increasing demands on city services and continues to invest in our existing staffing assets in a responsible and sustainable manner. In the last decade, the city has invested in funding for future capital needs, allowing for a stabilized budget. We now have a sufficient resources, excuse me, we now have sufficient resources in place for the next 10 years for most of our infrastructure and equipment necessities. Each year, the city council reevaluates the capital improvement plan to ensure the future needs are addressed. During our budget discussions, the major topics covered were continued the major topics covered were continued public communication enhancements, addressing public nuisance code enforcement services, IT services, IT software upgrades, and reestablishing community events. The city council reviews the tax rate, growth factors from development, budget modeling as guidance when making their budget decisions. In looking at the items to be voted on in this evening, the city council will approve a levy resolution and a budget resolution. The levy represents the amount to be collected through property taxes in 2023. The budget resolution represents the proposed amount of money proposed to cover city expenses in 2023. The difference between the budget and the levy amounts is the revenue collected by the city during the year. The proposed 2023 levy reflects several factors affecting overall impact in the amount of taxes collected from individual property owners this year. Some of those factors, the city council did not have control over. First, the homestead market value tax credit legislation, increasing the value threshold, did not pass the legislature this last year. This alone impacted many homeowners, as the value lowers the value, equating less taxes paid. Secondly, the market value for homes in Columbus increased an average of 19.5%, along with having an inflation rate of over 8% for goods and services, added to the increased market value of new homes over the last two years. The council considered the market value that was evaluated in Anoka County for all homes in 2021, and all the factors above when looking at the tax impact to all properties, and did not maximize the taxing potential in the market growth values. The outcome of their hard work is the final levy representing a tax decrease for 2023 at 45.71%, compared to 2022 at 48.55%. There are three areas that we saw increases in the budgets, so I wanted to highlight those areas. We had an increase in police, fire, and public safety that was equated to $101,000. There was an increase in capital improvement plan of $158,000. And then there was an increase to the staffing IT for software and IT services of $160,000. Overall, the city council took a conservative approach while looking at all aspects of city services, labor costs, the cost of inflation, increased costs of equipment, and balancing the requirements, the needs, and the requests of a growing city. While I know all of you didn't have an opportunity to sit through the five or six budget meetings that we had and workshops, I wanted to let you know that there are multiple factors that go into looking at a budget, a levy, and what the actual taxing rate comes out to be. So, I can certainly answer questions on any of those topics. Council can also answer that, and I'd be happy to do that. If there's a particular line item that anyone would like to look at, I can also look at that. I do want to mention one thing. This is the first year that all of you have received what they call truth in taxation office of state auditor statements, which means in your taxing and your proposed taxes, you received a statement. The format that that is reported on is a little bit different than our line item budget. Cities run on a cash basis, meaning we have dispersments in revenues, while they not always talk to each other, that's an accrual basis accounting, we run on cash. And so, we have a line item budget. It's basically cash in, cash out, and again, at any given time, I can tell you what cash we have on hand, although it changes because we pay bills every other week. In addition to that, well, I'll stop there, and I will entertain questions, because I think if I go too far, we'll get too many details in. So, Mr. Mayor, if you want to invite people up, I will certainly be able to help them.
Anyone who would like to come up, please come to the middle table to the mic and give your name and address for the record, and then ask away.
Hi, my name's Olaf Edgar, 7444-159th Avenue Northeast, Forest Lake, or Columbus, I'm sorry. It's my first council meeting, so I apologize if I'm a little not as well-versed as some people may be. You know, we got the tax, you know, form that came in, and we also own a property in Hugo. And, you know, we looked through the numbers, and there were a lot of decreases, you know, in both counties, in some of the line items. But there are also some increases. And property tax, I get it, you know, the property taxes are going up. But when we look at the line item, and I'm sure this may be explained by somebody here, but under the general government line, under the proposed, or the current year, it's 100, or, sorry, 818,556, and it's proposed to go to 1.53, 0.071, which is a 40% increase. And, you know, all the other line items that we look at, and I know there's a lot of stuff that goes into it, are on, you know, 10% to 15% when they are raised up. And we just kind of, and there's also probably other ways to look at this, too, but, you know, Hugo's got 16,000 people with a budget of 1.9 million. We have, Columbus has a residency of 4,231 with a budget of 1 point, or proposed budget of 1.1 million dollars, which is, you know, $272 per person compared to $123 per person in Hugo. And that's a, that is up, that $272 per person is up 40% from last year. Her proposed is going up 40%, where Hugo's gone up for 14%. So it's just, when you look at those numbers, you have to question what it is, and why that is such a big increase when everything else isn't. So, that's it.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I think I explained to you early on that other communities have different ways of looking at their line item budgets. And unfortunately for us, our capital budget is mixed in with our operations budget. So, sometimes when we compare it to other communities, it's not apples to apples, because most communities take all of that capital out. And next year, that's what we will do also, because I think it well defines what we're actually looking at for operations. The, and I think we will be similar to other communities if we do that. We are still using some of the township ways, even though we became a city in 2006. In addition to that, the Office of State Auditor, the way they have us report, only has five categories, where we have, if you look at ours, we have like nine categories. And so what they have us do, they have us take different numbers and combine them how they want to do reporting. So, I'm not sure how they got 40%, because our, if you look at our percentage, it was 13.5 overall increase. So, again, I'm not sure how Anoka County came up with that number. It's not our number, and it's certainly not the numbers that we have in our tax statement, nor in our budget work papers. So, I know it's a different format for the Office of State Auditor, and this is the first year that we're, that this format was used. So, the only thing I can do is I can ask the county how they calculated that number, last year over this year. But it certainly did not go up 40%. I can assure you that the general fund did not.
Okay.
Again, if you would like, if you want to come up any day, I will, I will sit down with both of you, and we can go over the line items, to show you where those percentages come up. Because the line item budget you have, those are the, those are the numbers we use every day.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Joel. I live up at 17010. I think a lot of my points are gonna be the same as his. And I mean, I don't, I don't know that what you're saying is really making sense.
Okay, so let's try again, so.
Well, you know, where do we get these numbers? And aren't you kind of in charge of how this works? I mean.
Yes.
It's not us for to decipher, it would be you to kind of make it more clear here, because this is what we get. And I get Washington County, because I have properties in Washington County, and along with his statement, they're not even close. For City of Forest Lake isn't even close to what you guys have for a budget. So, we have some issues with what's on paper here. And there's issues with the tax assessment, too, but I think that's probably a different, I don't think the tax assessor's here, so.
No, he's not here tonight, yeah.
Altogether. One, and I don't know if you guys are familiar with the different sites like SPARs and some of them that evaluate our real estate, and they're very accurate. I mean, you see Columbus very well broke out, and it doesn't represent even what we're seeing as an assessment. So, there are a lot of issues with all of these numbers, but especially the one, the City of Columbus in the budget.
Sure. So, looking at your market value, that we use the assessor's office at Anoka County. So if you have an issue with the market value, they will look at that, and they will go over that with you in detail.
Right.
This council doesn't set values, although when you get your proposed tax statement, if you disagree with that, when they hold the local board of appeal and equalization, you should come to that meeting, because we can really talk about values at that point, and that there's a presentation for that. So, again, if you have issues with that, I think you should definitely talk to them.
Yep, and I realize that's not for today, but I wanted to make that point. So, yeah, I'm still, and my concern with the other resident is City of Columbus. It's the highest number of all the increases, and we don't have anything else to compare it to on paper other than what we get.
Yes, and I agree with you, and I think if you, if you compile numbers in one line item, you know, it's in your, in your dividing numbers for values, you're gonna get a very high percentage, but it's not gonna be a true representation of the actual number. We've all had very small percentages, you know, it might go up $10, and it might be a 50% increase, you didn't mean, because it was $5 before. So, I think you have to look in perspective, but in this particular case, the summary sheet that I have, and I can give you a copy, it looks like this, you know, actually shows the, you know, I mean, the change, and the percent change in the general fund. And we did see, we did see some changes. As I indicated, we increased the budget by $523,000 from last year to this year. So, depending on how you combine those numbers, you can, and that's what Anoka County did, because it's not our format, it's theirs, that they required us to report in. So, I don't know what combination, you know, numbers they took from my reporting to them, and I can ask them certainly how they did that. This is, again, the first year we're seeing that type of report in your truth in taxation. But I will tell you, overall, it's a 13.5% increase. I've looked at the reports coming out of Anoka County. So, I know our format is different, so I can't, I can't explain the percentages and differences in the math, but I can give you the actual numbers that our levy went up.
You know, it'd be interesting to see it and do, you know, what I would consider my own business math. But there's some other things that are concerning, and you say it went up 13%?
Yeah.
That was the number you used?
Mm-hmm.
You know, we've all heard the, we got all this increased commercial properties and taxation of all these other developments, and out on the freeway. That should factor into this 13% in a huge way, where the residents shouldn't see these kind of numbers. Now, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not looking at all these numbers, but something's not adding up here.
So, there was a lot, there was a lot of factors this year. So, the tax rate did go down, and that is, that is a direct relation to having new businesses come on. I will tell you that over time, businesses come, as the value comes on. So, you saw new businesses in 2023 and 2024. We'll see the benefit of those. There's always a lag of 18 months before value comes on. We have had significant value come on to Columbus from 2022 to 23, and because of that, when we call the commercial growth, it means that we have more people to pay taxes. So, as you, as you talked about Hugo, there's a lot more population. So, you can spread out the numbers amongst more people. So, more people have a piece of the pie. When you have less numbers to spread out a particular amount of money, they're gonna pay more money. So, unfortunately for us, we do have a smaller number of people to spread out a number over. But again, as you develop and as you get businesses, which is why the council is working really hard on gaining businesses, because that's how you, that's how you balance the tax burden. Commercial property taxes basically pays twice as much as residential. So, when you want five acre minimum, and you want, you know, you want to keep that lifestyle, you look at other ways to create tax base. It doesn't mean that your services that you provide go down, because we still have to provide police, fire, all those services to those businesses. So, we still have to keep up with that. So, what the council did this year, they had a growth factor, meaning if we wanted to keep the tax levy at zero, they are given numbers and say, you know what, you can increase your budget by X numbers, and you can keep the tax rate at zero. And we were given a number of like 610,000. And I said to the council, you need to take a conservative approach, because I think that is quite high, and I don't think we need to do that. And through the budget process, they didn't meet that. It was 523. But there were other factors that influenced how, what you pay based on value affected everyone. And whether it was the homestead market value not passing, it was supposed to be, it was supposed to go from 413 to 473, which lowers the value and lowers the taxes you pay, that didn't pass the legislature. We had 19.5% increase in market value. Not everyone did. So, it was a bell curve. So, there are some people who paid, because their market value went up 19.5, they took on a bigger percentage of the pie, because their value was that much higher. Those who didn't, maybe they only got, if you got less than 5%, you had a tax decrease this year. So, it just depended on where you landed on your market value as to how much you were going to pay. It didn't help that we had a 9%, or just under 9% inflation, because new houses coming on forced, again, those values to rise. And so all those factors factor in on your market value, because I have had people call me and say, my market value went up 110%, or $110,000, how could that be? And I was like, you know, I have heard people say that there was bidding wars and everything else to drive up that market value, along with, I had developers telling me, they were paying $50 sheet of plywood, you didn't mean, so they, again, driving the prices of housing up. So, again, all of those factors were taken into consideration, which is what I was explaining to you earlier. The tax rate went down for Columbus. That's the, that's the gain from all those commercial businesses. And if we continue to do that, you will see a decrease in the tax rate, and thus you will pay less. But because of all those other factors, not everyone saw a decrease this year. And amongst the council, we've had the same questions, because each one of their tax statements was different. I will tell you this, I will go back to the county, and I will work with them to see the percentages and see actually that we're apples to apples here with what we are projecting. And if you give me your email address, I'll send that to you, because this, again, was the first year we reported in that manner, and I want to make sure that we had the right numbers.
Sounds good.
All right.
All right. And before you leave, and the rest of you guys, my taxes went up, her taxes went up, her taxes went up.
Mine went down.
Up, up. So, we're in the same boat you are, and we all grilled Elizabeth for the last month. What's going on? What does it mean? It's nearly. It's nearly impossible to understand it because it's so complicated. All their formulas and their programs, and we never even got into fiscal disparities. That's another.
That's another one.
Another wild one. Which Columbus is a loser. All of us taxpayers are losers on that.
You brought up another thorn in my side, actually.
I didn't do that.
Fiscal disparities.
Yep. And, and there's nothing, nobody's wasting a penny here. All the increases that there are are the price of fuel, price of gravel, price of salt, cost of insurance and that kind of stuff. I mean, we're, we're twice as horrified as you guys are because we're responsible for it. And there's nothing you can do. If you're not going to put fuel in the snowplows, nobody's going to be happy. If we don't have insurance to, in case something happens, it'll be worse. So truly, everything Elizabeth said is true and I'll back her up 1,000%. Plus the county with their new accounting system, as far as I'm concerned, a big fat mess. But she can understand it and she can get you the information. And email or come and make an appointment and you can understand everything as well as we can, I guess.
Yeah.
Or maybe better. So anyway, so I know it doesn't help when you got to write the check. But please feel confident to learn more if you want or at least understand that we take every bit of it seriously. And there's not much being wasted. I'll guarantee you that. So thanks for coming up. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks for coming.
Thanks.
Can I ask on Zoom, Mayor?
Ask if there's any. Just a hand.
Anybody online? I see Julie, would you like to add anything or have any questions for us?
You probably can't see the hands up and who they belong to, but there's, I think there's two.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, she's on, she's on chat and she says, why do we have all of these new high impact biz? Why do we have, why do we have all of these high impact businesses in our city paying high taxes, but yet our homeowner taxes have gone up so much? Okay, so Julie, are you asking questions of, of what I went over? Or did you miss, just did you, did you miss part of the earlier, earlier presentation? Okay, so she missed some, some of the parts for tech issues, okay. So, so Julie, depending on, you know, in big picture, when we're looking at businesses, we do strive to get and look at businesses because businesses tend to pay a higher rate in taxes than, than residence, residence or residential property. So we do seek out residential businesses and we are seeing and have seen some growth. Several years ago, you know, we started with the, the hotel and, and some Viking, Viking industrial came on. More recently, you have seen Love's Travel Center and Caribou Cabin. And all of those buildings will come on in 2024. So depending on when they come on is when we realize businesses and, and new business taxes. Unfortunately for us, we, we get a lot of reward from it, but there's, we are considered what they call a net loser. And so we do lose some of our tax base to what they call a, a pool, an industrial pool. But having, not going into those details, that's why our tax rate has gone down. And I think it is the goal of this council to continue to see that tax rate go down. And I think over the next few years, you're going to see that they're going to be able to do that. We have looked at staffing, we've looked at IT, and we've looked at our capital improvement plan. And we've looked at a program to stabilize the budget so that we are able to get to that point. So I think over the next few years, you'll see that. We saw a little bit this year, again, with a 3% decrease in the tax rate. Overall, I don't know what to say about the market values. I'm not sure what's going to happen there. That's anyone's guess in the, in the big picture. But that too will stabilize forward because we did an evaluation of the entire city. And now you'll only see one-fifth of the city being reviewed each year. And then you'll see incremental changes, not across the board changes. I hope that answered your question. If it didn't, email me. I can give you all the details.
Elizabeth, this is Janet. Is it, is it worth just to put in perspective the numbers that you shared with us on the fiscal disparities? I mean, I think just to know that like 40% of the commercial tax, property taxes gets put to a pool and how much that is, and then how much goes to other communities of that versus how much we get? Because that is one big difference between Columbus and other cities. I think we, we are the only net loser in all of Anoka County. Everybody else gets more money back than they, than they put in, lucky us. And so maybe if you could just quick, because I think that really is, helps explain some of the difference between the growth in the commercial side and, and, and not sort of the commensurate relief you'd expect from that growth.
Sure. I, I won't go into the formula, but I'll just give you an overall numbers, numbers perspective because the formula is quite complicated. And it's like 40 pages long, so. But rest assured, I had a presentation and I was mesmerized about all the details that Anoka County goes through to do fiscal disparities. So I had an opportunity to, to work with the council because I, I felt during a workshop meeting that we should go over those numbers, which is what Councilman Hagelin is referring to. So in looking at the current pay contribution to what we call the area-wide tax base, Columbus contributes $739,319. The county puts this into, so, so all that money is put into a pool. They put it through a formula, they turn it into a value. And then the Seven County metro area, it gets redistributed to different communities. And for Columbus, when we talk about a community that's a net loser, it means that we contribute more than we take out of the pool. And this year, we will take out of that pool after we have contributed over $700,000, So it's, it's very significant for our small community for this formula. And it works against us for several reasons. And I know our attorney is well aware of all those reasons because he too went through the program with me to figure this out because I, I did bring this to the attention of the council. And I will tell you, we've been at the legislature now for three years trying to change the formula. It's very unfair to a small community that works so hard to get commercial development. And when we get commercial development, we tend to lose a good chunk of the profits. And it's just based on the formula. So that's just a little example of, you know, I mean, what happened to us.
Just to add one thing, Elizabeth.
Yes.
One of the things that, that really works against us is the slow growth of the population because that's a factor in the formula. So it's the growth of our commercial industrial tax base, 40% of that's contributed to the pool. And then it's distributed back on a population basis. And since our population is relatively flat compared to some of the cities around us, we get less and less back as we grow, so as we grow our tax base. And, and we have tried to mitigate that. We've had a couple of bills in the legislature. One of the, the difficult things is they look at our, our community as property tax, value-rich. And, and I know you would all say that's not the case. But when they stack us up against other cities our same size, we come out on the higher end in terms of value per capita. So there's, that formula is extremely complicated. It started in the 70s. It's basically creates winners and losers throughout the metropolitan area. And it's very difficult to, to change the formula.
And I will say, we have tried. We have, we have paid to have work done with the legislature for three years now.
Two.
Two years to try to, to try to get at least some compromise or some other relief, even if there's no appetite to change the formula. And we've come very close. But as you know, last year, they didn't do much before they adjourned and they didn't get that part that we requested, that bill that we, that we drafted through either. I think the other thing, Bill, if you could just mention too, some of the other dollars that typically come back to other communities that we don't get, like the gas tax. And again, as you compare yourself to communities around us, I mean, that's some of the reason why more of the burden gets borne by the residents is we don't get those dollars back to our community like other, like size or maybe slightly larger cities do.
Mr. Mayor and Council, there are three primary pools of money we don't receive. We don't, we receive, we're a net loser on fiscal disparities. Our residents pay gas tax at the pump, but because there's a constitutional prohibition against paying a gas tax back to cities, it's called municipal state aid funding, when their population is less than 5,000, that's in the constitution. So we've tried to have a workaround on that as well. And the last one is local government aids. And that is, again, that's a formula that's based upon size of population, your tax base and the, the demands on your city budget. So those three big pools of money that's distributed back from the state don't come to Columbus. And that's what we're trying to mitigate when we go to the legislature.
And it's almost time to start again.
Yes.
Yep.
Any other questions, anyone?
So question on Bill, that, that the name of that bill was Small Cities, correct? Or was the name of our bill that Karen Housley was trying to carry?
Yeah, Karen Housley carried the Small Cities Funding Bill. And we, we got through committee in the Senate. We didn't get a hearing in the House. They adjourned before we could, without taking any action on the omnibus tax bill. So that's, that's the name of the bill. We can certainly put it up on the website if people want to see it. But it's really a complicated story when you're a small city asking to change the formula. So we asked not to change the formula, but to provide a, a funding mechanism that would relieve us from some of this loss that we receive every year. Or I better said, don't receive.
Yeah, so like in the future, if us as all as residents can reach out to our legislators and, and show support for these type of bills that we're trying to push from the city, that'd definitely be a huge help. I know I personally reached out to ours and, and brought it up. I met with Karen Housley. She said, we're going to get the thing done, and it died, right? But if we can all put pressure on those legislators, hopefully we can make change in the future here. So.
And I really think we're all with you. I mean, I, I got my parents that they own land here. My grandparents own land in Columbus. And I'm getting calls from them, like, what are you doing up there? Why is this, what's going on? Why is our taxes going to go up? It's like, well, I'm feeling it too. The assessor was at my house two weeks ago. I, I got an addition that's not even done and he's crawling there wanting some more money, right? And that's.
Anything else?
I just wanted to tell you that mine went up $500 also. And I wasn't that mad until I saw your, your remark on the internet. And I turned my bill over and I went, 40%? So I immediately came in and talked to Elizabeth. So I, you know, I kind of understand where, where it is now. So I just want you to know that we're kind of all in the same boat.
We all do.
Yeah.
Truly. All right, anything else? If not, oh, what's the motion numbers?
This will be 36.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 2236, approving the final levy in the amount of $4,233.69. Nope, no. And $69. No.
Yes.
Sorry, $69 for taxes payable in 2023. Is there a second?
This is Janet. I second.
Any other discussion or questions? No, they got the numbers right. Shelley?
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. And I assume the next one is Resolution 37? All right, we got that part. So I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2237, approving the final 2023 budget in the amount of $5,097,764. Is that correct? And is there a second?
That is correct.
Yep. This is Janet. I second.
Any other questions or discussion?
Yeah, this is Rob because I was not able to attend the workshop last night. I'm curious in the road, road and maintenance budget, if calcium chloride, does that fall under the salt, salt, sand and blacktop? So where does that fall in the? Dust control, okay, thank you. And then one other clarification. The CSO in the end, we were, we were cutting that CSO totally out.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm going to approve the budget, but I just want to state again that I was not in favor of that. And then the dollars from that, was that to be allocated to a, a compliance officer? And where does that fall within the budget?
It's in there for code compliance. It's not for a position. It's just, as you know, we discussed this at our workshops.
Yeah.
And we were waiting to see if other members of the council were going to come back with other options besides a personnel. So still waiting on that. I think we're going to talk about it in January.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
It's, Rob, just for your reference, it's under page three of 10.
Three of 10.
In the yellow.
So we have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Moving on to number 13. Chapter 16C abatement in Chapter 5, Public Nuisance Ordinance Amendments, 2208 in our enclosure.
Also nice work, everyone on that. It wasn't easy.
No. Mr. Mayor and Council, I got a briefing from Megan Rogers. Jessica is not available tonight, so I will do my best to kind of walk you through this. You should have two marked up documents. One is Chapter 5, Public Safety and Public Nuisance. And the other is Chapter 16C, Violations Abatement Code. There are comments throughout this. There are changes that were based upon council direction and conversations between Megan Rogers and Jessica. So rather than go through each kind of bubble or comment on the document, I will, I will first ask if the council has questions. ask if the council has questions. So those comments in the red line form are intended to address the direction that was given by the council, or in some cases, it's Megan's response to Jessica. So I can, I can try and address those as we go through this, but I wanted to start by asking if you have specific items you want to go over.
I didn't see anything. I read through the comments. I looked at the things that I had questions on when we reviewed it that day, and it looks like everything that I had concerns about was addressed.
Okay. Other council members, questions or comments?
I had a comment on page 5-2. I had originally talked about the burial of the carcasses of animals. And at one time, I said I didn't think that we needed to get into detail, but in light of the things that have happened in the last week, we had three bald eagles die because of eating carcass that was left out and not, you know, covered up or, you know, it was, it was available for food. And they died. And I just had an animal put down with the same method. And my veterinarian told me, you know, "You have to bury it, you know, four feet," and then there's, you know, and it shouldn't be near your well. And I think something needs to be put in here, just generally either asking for the vet's assistance in disposal of the body or, or that type of thing. Because I, you know, I, I knew that it was serious, but I, but until the last week, I did not see the evidence of it. And like I said, there's quite a few bald eagles that are ill, and three have died because of someone leaving a carcass out and being fed upon by wild animals.
Shelley, this is Rob. Is that, is that due to like the process of the euthanization? Or are you talking about like a roadkill deer?
No, I'm talking about, we, on this particular portion, it talks about if you have an animal die on your property, you need to get rid of it. And if the animal is destroyed with certain chemicals, you have to bury it, or you have to get it so that it can't be eaten during the time that you, you're waiting to bury it. And I know that it took me a couple of days to bury one of my animals. And the vet was very clear about, you have to keep it, you know, secure until it's buried. So I think we need to put something in there now because of the recent.
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, I did discuss this item with Megan Rogers. The definition mirrors statutes. Organic waste includes carcass. So a carcass is considered junk and, and needs to be dealt with. It is a public nuisance if it's not buried. But are you asking for something?
Yes, because even if you don't bury it, if you're getting, like, somebody's going to come and pick it up, okay? But the animal has been destroyed through the veterinarian with certain chemicals, you cannot have the body out, available for, you know, scavengers. And the problem is, is that people will, there are people that will dispose of animals with what they call an above-ground burial type thing too, thinking this is natural and that sort of thing. But it's not natural when the animal is destroyed. So what I'm saying is if a vet destroys it, and we have to talk about the chemicals or...
I think, well, I know in dogs, they use pentobarbital. I think it's the same thing in, in horses.
Right.
So it's a really, it's the same stuff they use sometimes in lethal executions of people, so.
Right. So all I'm saying is if the animal has, because if the animal dies of natural causes, you know, we already have it in here that you have to have it buried within four days. But if the animal dies and you had it put down with chemical, then you can't allow the animal to be eaten by anything before you get it buried. And my vet told me four feet deep and keep it away from your well. It's a, it's a health violation. And the problem is, is that obviously somebody didn't, this, this is in Inver Grove Heights. Somebody didn't. And, and like I said, three eagles are dead, and, and quite a few are sick. So.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I, I understand the comment. I'm just struggling for the specific language that we're looking to add. Is it to include in the definition of junk, unburied animal carcasses? Or what, what specifically are we trying to address?
I guess what I'm saying is, it's fine to say what you have here.
Yep.
But if the animal is destroyed chemically by a veterinarian, the body must be secured before it's, in, in other words, cannot be available for consumption by, by scavengers before it's buried. And I don't know if we want to get that technical. I mean, I, I was thankful that my veterinarian knew about this, because I, I would have probably buried it too close to my well.
I'm wondering if there's any language, like, from the university extension service? I mean, they do a lot of stuff related to horses and, you know, like the above-ground composting and things like that. I just wonder whether there's some recommendation or even reference to a statute or something that might help us out there.
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm just going to direct you to page 5-3. And this is, I'm sure, what Councilmember Logan's referring to. A e-carcasses of animals not buried or destroyed within four days after death. It was initially 24 hours, and the council, I think, directed a more permissive four days. But, so you want a subset of that, unless, unless destroyed with, destroyed chemically, in which case they would have to, what? What's the?
They have to keep it.
They have to secure the carcass so that it can't be scavenged.
So cover it with a tarp or a plywood or what?
Keep it inside.
For instance, we have, we have people that pick up the animals. If they're large enough, they, they pick the animals and take them away. But if the animal's laying in the yard, there can be scavengers that come. They have coyotes and bears and everything else. And this stuff is really lethal. Apparently, it lasts in the body for like four years. So even when you bury it, it's, you know, gophers beware.
I think I have enough to work with.
All right.
Thank you. I just had to find the, the line to insert it in.
Yep.
Got it. Thank you. Other comments from the council?
So, yeah, this is Rob. I believe it's page 5-4, the piling or storing of old machinery. I get the, the inoperative vehicles or, or junk debris, that things of that nature. I know we got multiple farms. Several of them collect old machinery as collection, right? It's, it's screened by trees or whatever. And I'm guessing what's constituting a public nuisance of that? Technically, say a farmer had 50, 80, 100 acres, why would the public be on their property?
I'm on 5-4, and I'm seeing references.
It's at the bottom. It's high lit. The piling or storing and keeping of old machinery. This one here, Bill.
It's not lining up with, so if someone can help me with the section number?
It looks like it's I.
Oh, yeah. Well, it's probably on the following.
5-500.
Under I, yep.
Thank you.
I mean, it's saying to, to incorporate junk or, or hoarding as a comment. I do know I have, you know, there's, there's people that live around me too that are car collectors, and they have a few cars that are, you know, properly screened and all behind, you know, their buildings or whatever it may be. And their, their collector cars will collect, you know, might be parts for a car they're working on or something. That's not affecting anyone, you know? It's screened.
Well, if we go to page 5-5, flip one more page. It's called attractive nuisances. Does that mean, Bill, that might make somebody want to walk in there and get their hands slammed on the door or something?
Right. That attractive nuisance is something that kids and other people are kind of attracted to, whether it's a pile of dirt or a pile of refuse. They want to play king of the hill, whatever. That's kind of an attractive nuisance. A swimming pool, the reason that we put fences around them is because they're an attractive nuisance. I know none of you probably pool hop, but I might have done that. So, you know, those are attractive nuisances. But I did finally find the reference, so let's deal with that.
All right.
I, I must have a, it's printed on different pages, because it was printed out today. So I've got I, the piling, storing, or keeping of old machinery wrecked, junked, or inoperable veh, inoperative vehicles.
And I guess really, the only thing I'm current, I'm concerned about is the keeping of old machinery. I mean, typically, if someone that's collecting it or something of that nature isn't piling it, it's usually in nice rows and...
Yeah, I mean, if you like, we could strike the word or, the phrase or keeping. That would clarify that it's not, you know, like a collector.
Is your concern more about, they can keep it as long as it's not in plain sight? Is that, is that?
Yeah.
I think he's getting at the visibility of it.
Mm-hmm.
And if it's not visible?
And I guess if it doesn't affect anyone else, and each side of them's got a farm on each side, right? Or, I mean, we don't have a ton of farms left, but that's my concern.
So unless screened from public view?
Yeah, or something like that. I think that's, I think that's what you're concerned about.
I think that'd be fair, yeah.
Screened from public view or neighbors, something to that effect.
Thank you.
We'll tweak that. Yep. Just had to find the right, the right lines, because otherwise, I'm not clear where we are in the document. Okay? And then, Mr. Mayor, did you have something on attractive nuisances?
No, I was just referring that to letter I.
Got it.
Because you've got rows and rows of machinery. That's an attractive nuisance. So how do they play against each other?
Yeah, the, I believe the inoperable vehicles is more specific. Attractive nuisance is a broad category of things that, that would attract, you know, kids and others and cause potential harm.
All right, thank you.
So I just have a question. So does this, do these edits now allow us to use abatement to address these nuisances? Where before, we could only use abatement in the public safety capacity? Is, is, is the language in here sufficient that if that's the direction we want to go, we now have ordinances that back it up?
Yes, that was the main purpose of all of these amendments.
I just wanted to hear you say it was, that's going to get us there. Thank you.
You're welcome. That was the goal in mind.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, so far, I've got the amendment regarding the destruction of, and, and burying of chemically destroyed carcasses or animals. And I've got the amendment regarding the keeping of old machinery. It has to be screened from public view or neighbors. And neighbors.
So I just have one question. So it has, I'm looking at, well, it's on mine. It's on page 5-5, and it's J, and it's under whatever the section is, 5-500. This was my question in the beginning about the stormwater ponds and are they public nuisances? And I see the answer is no. And the reason I think this is an important thing for us to address is because there are so many of them here. This is, I'm just curious, like, is that, is that also, if a child wandered into a stormwater pond and drowned, would the law be on our side that that's not a public nuisance? I, you know, that's...
The, the reason the answer is no is because the answer to that question is yes. The stormwater ponds, and this is also a question for our city engineer, the stormwater ponds are built with very specific specifications. The slope going into the pond, how much water can be retained. And generally, if, if it ends up being a deep pond, then the considerations are how do you secure it? But generally, the way, you know, many of our ponds operate dry much of the year. But there are also shallow ponds, and they're built with a slope that's intended for people to be able to walk out again.
Mm-hmm.
Now, if you, you know, if you happen to have a toddler who's, you know, not secured by their parents, then perhaps it is. But generally, my understanding, I'm going to ask the city engineer to confirm, those ponds are built in a way that they're intended not to be a public nuisance.
Also, to add to what Bill is saying, is that when those ponds are designed, there's typically a bench. So there's a slope down, and there's typically a flat area about 10 feet wide in that stormwater pond, so that if anybody tumbles down that first level, hopefully, they would get to that first bench and able to secure themselves and, and get back out. Now, if that pond is totally flooded to the maximum, you know, that would be a risk for anybody that would enter that in whatever fashion. But under normal operating conditions, there, there is that bench there that's intended as a safety measure, so.
And from a liability standard, standard, the city has tort liability exclusions unless they're doing something that's ultra hazardous. So if you build upon, you know, per engineering specifications with slopes, with benches, kind of the right way, you, that shouldn't create liability for the city. And I know that wasn't your question, but related to that is it's then not a public nuisance. So I think we're covered there. I know that there are exceptions to that. When you end up with, you know, really deep ponds, they can be fenced. And so that's really a call kind of made in the design stage, whether, you know, a deep pond has to be fenced or not.
I do still have questions, so we can take it offline.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Mayor and Council, is your direction to then bring it back with those final changes? Yeah.
I think so, yep.
That was the intent.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving on to letter D, engineer report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Kevin Bitner, city engineer. As far as any project updates, our West Free River Drive project continues to progress. Appears to be on schedule for what we had hoped to get done yet before total winter shutdown. There's been, you know, some interruptions due to weather, including today and maybe the rest of this week. But they, but they continue to progress, and, and things are overall going very well Also, today, I had a conversation with Jerry Oge, the Assistant County Engineer, and I did ask him about our roundabout project at Kettle River and Lake Drive that we got highway safety improvement funding for, or at least the, the funding will go through the county. That is 2026 funding. And so I asked him what, how this project will progress, and it, it sounds like it'll be part of a larger improvement on Lake Drive. The intent is that in 2023, they will likely do some, some planning work on Lake Free, or on Lake Drive, beginning in Land of Lakes and progressing through Columbus. So 2023 will likely be a planning year. 2024 will likely be a design year. And 2025 would be start of construction, and likely would be done in multiple phases, maybe two phases. And the extent of that project would, would be, yet to be determined. So that's the overall scope at this point, and I'm sure we'll hear more as, as the county kind of narrows down how they're going to progress with that project. As far as, okay, the next item would be closing out of our Hornsby project for this year that's associated with the Loves Project. This is a final payment to... This is a final payment to Park Construction. Again, all of these costs would be paid by the developer, Loves, and that final payment is in the amount of $4,842.34.
I'll make the motion to approve payment number three, the final payment for Park Construction Company in the amount of $4,842.34 for the Loves Travel Project, the 2201 on Hornsby Street. Is there a second?
Mrs. Sue, I'll second.
Any other questions, anyone? I'll call the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jessie, aye.
The next item is the motion to approve easements for West Freeway Drive. And I'll, I'll do an introduction and Bill can fill in or supplement as needed since it is kind of a legal document. But essentially, the county is requesting approval of these easements on West Freeway Drive. The project is, as we all know, is receiving LRIP funds, which are state geo bond money. And so the county is acting as a pass through on those funds, basically from the state to be expended on a city roadway. And so for, the state requires because of that, that the county have some control over that area which the money is being expended on. And so the state requires an easement. It's detailed as a permanent easement, but it has a 37 and a half year life, lifetime on it. And so, again, this is all language in the easement that's required by the state. And so the county's asking the council to approve that easement so the money can flow to our project.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I just reviewed the easement. For any concerns, I didn't have any concerns in the document. It'll essentially sit on top of our ownership, the city's ownership. So I'm not concerned that we're transferring ownership of the city right of way, but to make the LRIP funding work, the agency has to be in control of the right of way for that funding to come from the state. So I've looked at the documents. I don't have a concern. Kevin and I talked about it yesterday, and so I would recommend approval.
Any questions, anyone?
I have a question. What happens after the 37 years?
I'm assuming the easement would expire and that the county would, or the city would have full control over the right of way.
I think one of the things we should do, since it's not an automatic, is there, there needs to be some way to tell people in the future to request that termination, to kind of clean up the title. So we'll have to figure out a method, tick their 37 and a half years out. I suppose that, you know, that would be something that would be in the file, noted kind of prominently in the file, but also kind of passed on from, you know, administration to administration. I had the same question because I looked.
Like a giant Post-it note in Elizabeth's office.
Yeah. Well, we're going to have to find some way of tracking that because it isn't automatic. One of the things that, that I looked at was whether that terminated by its terms. It says at least 37 and a half years to meet the requirement of the funding program, but it doesn't say that it goes away in 37 and a half years. So that, that is something we're going to have to wrestle with. And perhaps you can ask the county how they've handled that in other projects because it isn't just a given.
Yeah, and I did talk to Jerry a little bit about that as well. And he said he had a conversation with their attorney about the same thing, that there is no fixed date as to when it expires. And he was assured that it's in there, and I don't know if it's related to that 37 and a half years, but maybe it's a question, maybe it's a question for the attorneys.
Yeah, right. I'll take another look, but I didn't see an automatic termination.
Thank you. So I'll make the motion to approve the easements from Mindot as presented for the Northwest Freeway Drive Improvement Project. Is there a second?
This is Janet, I'll second.
Any other questions or comments? Shelley?
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jessie, aye.
That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Moving on to 15, Attorney Report.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, you have in your packet what would be resolution 2237?
38?
38? We're up to 38, okay. That's a resolution approving, approving the sale of city owned property to 9252 Lake Drive Northeast LLC. That's a single purpose entity created by the owners of Running Aces for the acquisition of property from the city. You recall that we had a couple of meetings over this. They were closed meetings because we were negotiating with the, the buyer of the property. Now we've gone through all the title work. We are ready to close. And as I indicated, we are in that range of, that the council gave us. I can follow up. I was looking on my phone for the document. I can follow up and send you the purchase agreement so you have it, so you know what that price is, and you can confirm that it was in the range that we approved, that you approved as counsel. So this is really administrative to give us authority to close. The documents are online. The nice thing is they want to close by the end of the year, so we hope to accomplish that and, and get rid of some more city owned property and put the proceeds in the city's accounts and pay down some debt.
Any questions or anything? All right, I'll make the motion to approve resolution 2238, approving the sale of city property, city owned property to Running Aces Harness Park. Is there a second?
Shelley, I'll second it.
Any other questions? I have a question. So this is the property which is south of Holiday, correct?
It's three, oh, go ahead, Elizabeth.
It's, it is surrounding Holiday and the property south of Horns, or I'm sorry, West Freeway Drive, adjacent to Running Aces. So it's all the property in the southwest quadrant.
There's like three lots, right?
I'm sorry.
Southwest, that's right.
Southwest quadrant, yes.
Okay. So this side of the road and this side.
Three lots.
Yep. Mr. Mayor and Counsel, when the plaque goes through, it'll be three lots that are being sold.
Yes.
In the transaction, but it's essentially all, as Elizabeth said, all property in the southwest quadrant.
Okay.
So you have only the northeast and the northwest left to.
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else have a question?
Yeah, so, so this is that, just so I'm clear, the south, south of West Freeway Drive, that was where they were talking about putting that new, that second possible entrance in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that is correct.
Yep, thank you.
I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jessie, aye.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, I just have a brief legislative update, and it's probably really timely, given the earlier discussion on fiscal disparities. That is, we have talked to some of the leadership, Margaret has, about the prospect of coming back to the legislature. While Margaret's always optimistic at this point, for the reasons we've discussed, discussed previously, fiscal disparities is a complicated topic. And when we list some of the cities that are benefited by our, our bill, and we can't carve them out because they're similarly situated, you end up with some pretty wealthy communities on Lake Minnetaka. And, you know, that makes it hard for us to sell the, the relief package. Now, we could try, I suppose, to figure out how to carve them out, but it gets really, really difficult. When I asked Margaret, what does it mean that we have, you know, kind of Democrats in control of both bodies and the governor's office? She said that makes it a harder sell to say, with these, these cities that are viewed as property rich under the formula, need relief. Now, you know, we know all the reasons that it works against us. Our population, our wetlands, our large lots, all of those things, you know, work against us in the formula. So I think, you know, we could continue to try and advance this bill. We believe, and, and, you know, this is, I want to tell you now so we can have further discussion at next meeting, we believe that there is a better opportunity to get small cities transportation funding passed because it affects cities all across the state. So there's, you know, cities under 5,000 all across the state would become eligible for permanent small cities transportation funding. It has, it has passed, it has been approved in prior years, but it was only partially funded for those years. There's a 17 to 18 million dollar budget surplus, so this is a good year to ask for things that involve money, although it's permanent funding we're seeking. So if you just think about dollars, you know, we want to make up for the loss of dollars, whether it's state aid or LGA or fiscal disparities. We believe particularly with the change in, in the leadership in the parties, that small cities transportation funding is an easier sell. Now, if you tell us, yes, but we'd like you to still try and submit a bill for the fiscal disparities relief, we will do that. And we will do that, we'll take a third run at it. But I just want to be upfront with you that the change in leadership changes, you know, our chances of getting approved. We've always had Republican legislators sign on to the bill because they seem to understand it and they seem to be concerned about how fiscal disparities creates inequities. But we have not had a lot of Democrats support in the years that we've brought it forward. The, we know the authors of the small cities transportation funding, one of them was in our hearing when we were down there advancing our bill. But, so I just, I'm giving you kind of a, you know, I said I'd come back with some feedback, that's the feedback. But it doesn't mean that we're, that either bill is out. It's just, we want to be realistic about, you know, these efforts and we don't want to just go up there on your behalf and not be successful. So think about it, you've got a couple of weeks. I just wanted to let you know kind of where we're at. So the choices are do nothing, advance small cities transportation funding. And if we do that, one of the reasons I'd like to get your go ahead by next meeting is my thought is to create a coalition of those cities. We had some success last year in getting some cities interested in the other bill, the fiscal disparities relief bill. But there would be a larger number of cities, and, and they should carry some of the, the cost of, you know, doing this work. You know, this little city of Columbus shouldn't, you know, carry the rock uphill each year. So my thought is we would convene a meeting probably early in January with some of those similarly affected cities. So I would just look for your direction at your next meeting while you have a chance to think about it. And certainly would answer any questions. And if you think of questions between meetings, go ahead and email me and I'll get Margaret involved.
Do you have a list of the cities that are involved? In other words, are there more high profile like Minnetaka that everybody goes, oh my goodness, they have so much money? Do you have a list so that we know, like, what, what really is the problem? I mean.
We have the list from the fiscal disparities project, yes. That's, that, we put that together last year. We, we reached out to those cities and, you know, even for myself, just looking, it's like, oh, oh darn it, we got Yezetta's on that list and, you know.
I mean, it was.
Yeah, and so, you know, it would be pretty tough to write the law to exclude them, like, say, you know, only cities in the east metro or, you know, something like that, but.
But didn't you, didn't you put like a cap on it for, for that whole purpose so that? And then, and wouldn't there be a way that you could also reference other types of state funding? So if they receive that, then they would not be eligible for this fiscal disparities bill benefit?
Yes, that's correct. Mayor and Counsel, that was one of the qualifiers. We said cities, it's cities under 5,000, so they don't get gas tax. It's cities that don't get LGA and it's net, net losers, you know, under the fiscal disparities formula, so they get a, a reduction in their fiscal disparities distribution. And so all of those same cities qualified, but some of those cities have pretty significant tax base. And, yeah, I, I'll bring that list, I'll circulate that list, put it, make sure it's in the packet for your next meeting. If, if you'd like, I can email it to you ahead of the next meeting.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I, I hate to give up, give up, at least without talking to some of the new leadership to see whether or not there's any appetite for it. Yeah, I mean.
But I think what we'll find is that usually the new leadership is more interested in Minneapolis, Rochester, Duluth, and they're not friendly to smaller cities, especially rural or semi-rural. So Bill, even on your gas tax proposal, you think that would, how good of a chance is that to fly?
I think that has a much better chance. First of all, it's very easy to understand. These are cities that their commuters, you know, their, their workers commute distance, whether they're outstate or, or, you know, Columbus, their, their folks are driving to work and they're filling up at the tank, their tank at the gas station and they're paying the gas tax and they don't get anything for it. And, and the fact that, the fact that there have been bills that have advanced to create permanent funding also says, you know, maybe it just needs a little bit of a push, a coalition. And a lot of these, a lot of these measures around, you know, tax relief that affects cities, there, there are coalitions formed because the biggest question that those legislators want to know is who supports this? Do my constituents need this? Do my constituents support this? So that's, that's our thought is if we start out early in the session, putting together a transportation coalition of small cities, we can really boost the chances of a bill that's been introduced a couple of sessions. And maybe there's an opportunity to do both, right? To, to, you know, put together that coalition, maybe have that be our kind of driving effort, but also as Councilmember Haglund says, let's, let's ask some leaders in the key committees, the tax committees, hey, what do you think about this bill that we've introduced for two years now?
That was so close last year.
Right.
And, and sounded, from what you reported, to have pretty broad support, so.
Yeah, I hate to give up on it as well, but I do know the reality is that the change in, in leadership in the Senate makes it a harder, harder pass. So I'd like to, I'd like to combine that with something that might be easier to pass. Will take a little more work putting together a coalition, but then at the end of the day, having permanent transportation funding, you know, would be something really helpful to this city and a number of others, so.
But the monetary reward of, of the travel, the transportation is not, I mean, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars going forward on the disparity, the fiscal disparity. And how much is it? I, I don't, I don't remember it being that much.
I thought it was like 80,000 or something.
How much?
Was it 80,000? Am I remembering that right?
Yeah, and we're talking hundreds of thousands with the others, so it's.
Well, it was, that one year, two years ago, it was 86,000, let's say, for round numbers. The difference is the bill that was introduced last year was trying to increase that by setting aside a permanent funding source that they.
So we got it every year? So that we got it every year?
Yeah, and it would be more than 86,000. What, what the, the effort was, the payment two years ago was a one time, kind of one time money, and it wasn't all that much. The bill that was introduced last year was trying to make that permanent and increase it. It was, it was tied to a particular tax collection.
So is, is there availability to show like a hardship? I mean, we have so much state property, right? And more than likely, the people that are living here, they have property, right? They're using their own. It's the people from the cities, from Yezetta, from Plymouth, from St. Paul, Minneapolis, that are coming to use our state land and resources. Is there a way to show that and utilize that with the legislators?
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, you know, the, the payment in lieu of taxes is intended to try and, you know, that, that they pay. I don't know what that amount is, Elizabeth, that Carlos Avery pays.
Teeny tiny.
Yeah, I want to say it's in the neighborhood of 35,000.
So conceptually, that's the intent. The, the problem with any bill, you cannot have a bill that is, is, you know, general purpose legislation, you can't have a bill that's directed at one city. And that's why we have to go through these coalition efforts and we have to write a bill that at least there's two of us in the pot, you know? And so that's the trick is to say, okay, how do we write? So, so as Councilmember Haglund said, one of the ways we tried not to have kind of a runaway bill, I think there were some cities without the $200,000 cap would have had like $2 million added to their coffers. And that was not our intent, is to make a rich city richer. But the, the problem with fiscal disparities is, is, you know, even explaining it tonight to our own residents is, you know, you've got a new legislator, they're, you know, they're taking in all this information and now you've got to explain the tax base sharing pool and why it doesn't work for us. So that's always been our, you know, the hardest talking point. And we got it down to a page, you know? So we, our talking points were a page long in, in a graph. But that's, it's a hard sell. Whereas transportation, you can say, our folks are, are paying the same gas tax and they're not getting any benefit. And we've got roads, you know, that need to be improved and we're not getting any benefit.
Okay, Bill, before we would spend much time or any money on it. Okay, Bill, before we would spend much time or any money on it, is there a way to figure out or to look back in records, what has been the, has there been support from the Democrats in giving us this gas relief, gas tax relief in the past? I mean, it has passed, right?
Yes. It's, it's been a bipartisan bill. It's, it's had authors on both sides of the aisle. So the answer is yes. It, I can confirm in the year that we got money that, who voted for it. But in that, in that year, we had a split legislature. So Democrats had to support it for it to get passed.
But in a large number or just to pick up a few more votes and it passes or?
I, I can do a little bit of research.
I'm just afraid they may be punitive. You know, we're a really conservative county and a conservative city and a conservative quadrant of the metro. I don't see why they would. I think they prefer we have electric cars or take the train. So why would they be willing to part with this money for a city who's antithesis of everything they want?
Mr. Mayor and council, that's why we would want to have a coalition approach because then you pick up enough cities statewide that you've got outstate, metro, you know, primarily Republican base, Democrat base. That's, that's the kind of the golden, you know, the silver lining, if you will, of taking that approach is it's a much broader swath of small cities. And, and, you know, a lot of those cities, you know, they, they identify the problem, but they don't know what the solution is. And we've been close in a couple of years of having permanent funding for that transportation fund.
Yeah.
So, think about it. I just, I didn't want to come to you at the end of the year and say, okay, I need a thumbs up or down because that's, I don't think that's the right way to go. I'll send you a couple of things by email. I'll send you our talking points from last year. I'll send you the list of cities and the amounts they would have gotten under the bill.
Thank you.
I have nothing further.
Nothing. All right. City council members report. Shelley?
I have nothing.
Sue?
I don't have anything.
Should we talk about Sunrise, Elizabeth, or?
That look. I, I, you can give a brief update. I don't know. I didn't have to go through the saga, but.
Five minute recap. It's almost 8:30.
Two.
Um, we've had two meetings in the last two weeks to try to resolve this joint powers agreement issue. We came very close. It's kind of like your fiscal disparities thing and then, and then everybody went home. So long story short, Ham Lake basically blew us off and said, we like this funding scenario and if you don't like it, then we're not, we might withdraw. So we had a meeting earlier this week with Bowser. We were, Bowser is the Board of Water and Soil Resources, I think it stands for. Anyway, we had hoped that they were, we asked, asked them to bring their attorney, but they did not. So that was kind of a meeting of informing them once again what the problem was and asking for their assistance to resolve it. And Elizabeth was amazingly blunt with them about how this was their responsibility and they were really being derelict and not taking it on for the last however many years this has been going on. Long story short, we, we, I wrote a letter to Ham Lake asking them to give us in writing their intent. Are they going to withdraw? Are they not going to withdraw? And we asked for a response by the 26th of December. And based on what they tell us, we will take the next steps. We've been advised by the attorney for the watershed that it would be possible for us to dissolve the JPA by having the three other cities file an intent to dissolve at 60-day notice that we would be withdrawing from the JPA, which would affect, effectively kill the JPA and then reform the JPA with the three cities and leave Ham Lake to figure it out with Bowser. Of course, Bowser has some say in that and that's what they have to discuss with their attorney. So stay tuned. This was, we spent all the money that we were asked to contribute, all four cities had, were asked to contribute. So we're working on basically me doing the work and Elizabeth doing the work and whoever can do it for free because we don't have any money to pay Jamie or our attorney anymore to do this unless the cities want to cough up more money. Anyway, that's the long and the short of it.
So can they just drop out? I mean, how, what does that mean?
There is no precedent. The problem is there's no precedent and the statutes didn't anticipate this kind of behavior. And so they don't know, Bowser doesn't know what to do and nobody else knows what to do. And that's the problem.
Uh huh.
So can they? Till somebody tells them that they can't. That was what Elizabeth was reminding repeatedly the Bowser representatives that it's their job to tell them that they can't.
They're the rule making body.
Yes.
You know, so it's their job. According to, as Janet indicated, according to the attorney, the, the legislation didn't contemplate that any city would not either be a water maintenance organization or an organized watershed district. So the idea of one city just opting out is not anywhere, there, it's not in the legislation because that wasn't the intent when they made the maps in 1980. You had a choice. You were in one boat or the other boat or the county took over. And so there wasn't an option. There was not an option to say, oh, I want to opt out. I don't want to, I don't want to join. And, and now that someone has said that, they're like, well, the law doesn't even address that. How about that?
Wow.
And the ques, and the question is if they did allow it, then who redraws the boundaries? Who, I mean, it's, it's very complicated. So, and the crazy, the crazy part about this is that they're doing this because they can't, I mean, you're talking about a maximum cost to them of $5,000 a year. They want the option that's $1,800 a year. And they're willing, they've put us through all of this for that, that difference. I mean, it's not about money. It's, it's that they really just don't want to be part of, and it's not just Sunrise. They want to pull out of their upper room WMOL. So they just don't want to be part of it. And, and they're using this as sort of the lever. So, yes.
Thanks for going through it.
Yep.
Anything else, Jim?
Nope.
Rob?
No report, mayor.
Nothing here. Public works, Jim.
All right. I actually have one question for the attorney.
Uh oh.
Since the property on West Freeway Drive is being sold, and I, I understand that to be both sides, right?
Yeah.
Do we need to remove our for sale sign?
Oh, should we?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Like sooner than later or?
Yes, we have to deliver it to them free of debris. So if a for sale sign is debris, yeah, I think you can take it down.
Okay. That, that's.
If for some reason, if for some reason the sale doesn't go through, we'll just have to put it back up. But you, you could wait till the day of closing, but, you know, it's going to get really cold next week. So.
Exactly.
And the ground will get really frozen.
It probably won't be till next week anyways, but okay. I just, I just wanted to make sure that that's what we needed to do. So.
Yeah, take it out while it's warm.
What's that?
Take it out now while it's warm and not so bad.
And when the frost is only down a couple of inches, if even that.
Well, we have equipment, so I don't care about the frost. So.
The sign has been there for 15 years and nothing happened. I don't think that'll make the difference.
With the big machinery.
All right.
Yeah, but technically we're supposed to deliver it free and clear. So.
Okay. That's, that's what I figured. I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Public communications.
No report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Assistant city administrator, nothing. Elizabeth, city administrator.
I have two things on my report, but the first, the first one is the 2023 schedule of meetings, which is on page 41. This is a schedule that we look at in December of each year so that when it comes January, we're legal and we have all of our meetings posted for the entire year. So we briefly talked about meeting, meeting dates, but I think primarily the only thing that is proposed to change is the start time of city council meetings and planning commission meetings, which on page 41, if you look at, there's a proposal for meetings to start at 6:00 PM. Again, regular meetings, whether it's planning commission or council, to have a uniform start time for all meetings. So whether it's a joint planning commission meeting, council meeting, or planning commission meeting, it would start at six. The impact, the only other impact with that, with that schedule is that an EDA meeting that is quarterly would start at five because that meeting has generally started one hour prior to a Wednesday meeting quarterly and the, the dates are on the schedule. So that's the, other than, you know, your regular Wednesday meetings and the workshops being on Tuesday, there were no other changes. It's just formalized in, in this, in this chart so that we can publish it and post it for 2023.
Very good. Rob, are you able to make that change?
Yeah. I was just curious what the, where, where it came from or what the reasoning behind it is.
Just so we can get.
We have more time.
Earlier.
Yeah. Okay.
That night?
Yep.
I don't think it'll shorten the meetings. It'll just daylight savings time.
Right.
You don't have to hang out as long.
And, and the only other thing on, on the meeting schedule is the, the change in office
hours. And I know we talked as a personnel committee and it's always easier when you have scheduling, when you're looking at uniform hours. And many years ago, we indicated that one day a week, we would be open till five. I've polled all the staff members and we could probably count on one hand for an entire year, how many people come in between four and five on a Wednesday. And so our proposal is to have a uniform hours in our hours, Monday through Friday, eight to four. And we realize that we act as agents as, for the DNR for burn permits. And that's probably the hot commodity that people run in, you didn't mean to get a burn permit. But other communities have been doing this electronically and online. And I think we need to probably get with the program because we are handwriting all of the burn permits that we do. And I think we can also do them electronically and, and still follow the same process, you know, and give them, get everybody the appropriate paperwork, but we can actually do them online. So along with the, the meeting schedule, I'm proposing that the hours are uniform for Monday through Friday, eight to four. When we get to elections, not next year, but years after, we will offer a later night. That has always been popular. It has always worked where at least we have one night where we're late and it has been heavily used. So we will adjust hours during that time for that reason.
What was that time? During which time?
Elections.
Oh, elections. Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And what, what, what are the current office hours now? It's till 4:30 typically, right?
No, our office hours are eight to four, four days a week. So Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and then Wednesday, we're open till five.
Okay.
So I, that's why I just wanted to kind of have that uniform.
Yeah. My only concern would be the burning permits, but if we're able to do that, you know, it'll work.
Yeah.
All right. I'll make the motion to approve the 2023 schedule of meetings as presented with the change for city council meetings and planning commission meetings starting at 6:00 PM, along with changing office hours to eight to four PM, 8:00 AM to four PM, Monday through Friday. Is there a second?
This is Sue. I'll second.
Any other questions or discussions? I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jessie, aye.
And, uh, Mr.
It's untwisted.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted also to clarify in the motion when we approve the budget. I know that I didn't, I didn't actually write it out, but we had talked about it at the workshop, that while approving the budget, in the budget, we had budgeted for a 5% cost of living increase, but the recommendation was for 4.5%. And I just wanted to make sure that whether we wanted to amend the motion or we wanted to acknowledge that, we did talk about that yesterday at the workshop.
What's easiest?
Amend the motion and it's part of the motion.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion to amend. Say that again, Elizabeth, for me, please.
It's under, it's under motion. It's motion to approve resolution 37, resolution 22-37, approving, approving the final 2023 budget in the amount of $5,97,764 to include a 4.5 cost of living for employees.
So moved. Is there a second?
This is Sue. I'll second.
Any questions or discussions? I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Chelsea, aye.
Thank you. I have nothing further.
You should be on the council. You can make good motions.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Um, I have one other thing. I just, I just, I wanted to show you because, and, and I realize this is from, from my laptop. I know it's hard for you to, to look at this, but this is how the county asked for the information on the budget. Okay? Their categories were city-state general purpose aid, current, proposed. And then it was categorical aid. And then it talked about revenues. And then it said general, current government. Then it talked about public safety. Then it talked to city streets. So they made us chop up the bud, chop up the budget, you didn't mean, under their own categories, not, not our budget categories, but their categories. And so I'll, I'll go back a few here. So they had all of the cities and then they said your current year levy, your proposed levy, and then you just went across the board. And then you had to add up your numbers in those categories based, based on their criteria and plug the numbers in. And then they created a chart that all of you received based on these categories that are not how our budget is set up.
But Elizabeth, the part that I don't understand is this is the first year they did this. So.
Yeah.
How did they go back last, to last year's data and, and create that division like you just did? I mean, they wouldn't have been able to do that. So how did they even come up with a percent increase?
Well, that's, that's the two. So it says current year levy and then proposed levy. So they, they had us go back last year, re-categorize our budget, you didn't mean your levy, and then put the numbers in. So we did that. But when you, when you start going to the other end, if you notice, it says public safety. So you have to pull out police, fire, emergency.
Mm-hmm.
You didn't mean from our budget. So our numbers, you know, are not the, are not the same. Then it said pull out streets. So then I had to pull out public works, you didn't mean, and put that in a different one. So here, if you look at public safety, it's in 2022 is 90,150 and then proposed it was 102, uh, nine, nine 62 or whatever, whatever it is. But, um, but the, the problem, the problem with doing that is our capital budget is in here because our fire equipment is in here. So it kind of skews the numbers, you didn't mean, when you're, when you're looking at that. So that's why I said next year, I'm going to pull the numbers out because we're reporting numbers. So the numbers that everybody's looking at, it says city, general government. But then I had to pull out sanitation. And do you know what sanitation is? Recycling.
Mm-hmm.
So here, because I pulled out all these numbers, it was haphazard how I was pulling out the numbers. It was 81, or 800 and, um, 818,556 and 115, or I'm sorry, 1,15371. Well, that $100,000 that I moved from bonds is in there too. So I'm like, the numbers that they made me pull out because, you know, or not pull out, but put in, really, really didn't show or represent truly what was, what I would call general purpose money, but it was in the general fund. So I couldn't move the numbers. I couldn't move the numbers out. That's why I want to recategories, the categories of budget and I want to reclassify it because it's hurting us. We didn't have a 40% increase in our general levy. We had 13, but because the capital money was in there, it skewed, it skewed everything. So it's hard to explain that to everyone, you didn't mean, but literally we were, all we were to do for the county was give this line of numbers. They didn't want any of our budget numbers. They didn't want anything. This is how they wanted it. And they wanted it bundled up according to their categories and not ours. So, and, and this, and this happens time again, where we do reporting and everyone has different requirements and then we have to pull apart our budget and we add the numbers.
But I would like, I would rather have had the public.
But I would like, I would rather have had the public know that, or maybe we should say it next time or whatever, because you said you'd get back to a couple of people, you know? But the problem is, is that that 40 looks terrible. And the thing is, is if it has to do with capital funds, not only, it, people have to understand how important the capital funds were, because we saved a lot of money, you saved a lot of money by not having, you know, to pay and bond for things and that sort of thing. And they're not appreciating that. So, I mean, I would like the public to know that, and I don't really know how to get that across.
Isn't it, isn't it more that, that bond, that, that $100,000 that you had, that we paid off the bond early and that got thrown into our general fund, and then we moved it, but not when you did this reporting? So it wasn't even the capital, it was that $100,000.
And this shows it. In the preliminary levy, I moved it in the preliminary, that's what I'm saying. That's why I said there are certain things that have skewed this number when, but it skewed the number in the report that was sent out to everybody. It didn't skew the report that we did when I sent in the levy and the county, because if you look at other county reports, it says 13.5%. It doesn't say 40 point, whatever, whatever is in that line item. So it definitely is different, and I'll be more prepared. I didn't know that was going to be, that was going to be the particular question. Otherwise, I would have, I would have put this up there saying, okay, it's an entirely different format, and we have capital budgets in there, so you, it's not apples to apples.
Let me say this. The trouble is, I've heard this from you six times now, and I'm just starting to catch on a little bit. So when the people come, they haven't got a clue, except they think it's a half-price sale over Hugo. So Connor, this is a job for you. Figure out with Elizabeth how to say, put a little blurb in your line, put a picture of the Grinch coming down the chimney and say, this 40% increase is, is what, a mistake or miscalculation or something?
It's a reporting error.
Yeah.
And it's, and it's primarily due to the county's new form, and we've had one year to try and figure it out. I mean, I, I think it's, it's very, it's very simple in a sense that you can put something on the website that says, we've heard from many of you about a 40% increase. First, first of all, that's not the case. You know, it's 13.6. And let me tell you how we got there. Our capital funds were included, money from the sale of property was included, it should have been categorized differently.
But wasn't it also true that the money from that bond?
Yes.
You know, that we had to, we had to put somewhere? You put it in general fund, then you paid it to some capital funds, right?
I did.
And so that looks like an expenditure, but it's not. It's, we actually saved money.
That's my point. That's why I have to move it out, I have to move it out, I have to move it out of our 100 funds, because whether you're the auditor, whether you're the state auditor, the chart of accounts says it's a 100 fund, it's a general ops fund, you know what I mean? Because that's the chart of accounts. I have to move those counts out. There's just no question now, because the report, the reporting we're doing now, in order for it to be apples to apples to other cities, you have to use the chart of accounts and you have to use the numbering system. Otherwise, you do have people not understanding, or I understand what's going on, they're not understanding why they can't compare, and then they think we're trying to do something that is not right, which is not true at all. It was a throwback from township days when they didn't use the same numbering system.
But the one gentleman also brought up the point that our budget looks so large, you know? And again, we've had council members, you know, in the past that have said, why do we have all this money? And they don't understand the concept of the capital funds. And specific examples should be given to the people to understand, like the fire truck and the, and your equipment over there, you know? That, that we really saved a lot of money, and I would, they should even know of the other communities. As you mentioned Forest Lake, and I'm like, yeah. And Forest Lake had to, you know, bond for.
A fire truck.
Exactly.
Because they didn't have enough money in their, in their fund.
Right.
But, but you never hear the other communities talking about their capital funds. You only hear them talking about the general fund. And here, we're very transparent, and we're, we're talking about across all the funds, we talk about how we're saving, and you don't hear other communities talk about it, because all they talk about is the general fund. They don't talk about capital nor bonds. It's completely out of, out of the reporting. So a little bit different, and I think this is because when I first started here, we were a township, and we had an annual meeting, and we literally did the budget line by line, and your budget is still line by line, and we're using some of the same numbering system from, from township days where everything was on the table. When I tell everybody, this is it, this is what we use every single day, this is it. This is what we use every day. Jim and I code bills from this. So we're very transparent on revenue and disbursements on a cash basis. It's just when you get to this reporting and everyone wants it in a different format. And I've asked this a number of times, why we have to do this, and they just tell me because. Because.
That's government for you. So I'll say this in closing. Elizabeth, thank you for all the budget and all of this. I truly believe it's as good as it can be. I understand this mess at the county. I understand the frustration of the people, because I've heard it six or more times, and I'm finally starting to get it, so they can't pick it up and believe they understand 10% of it. You can't. And I think the county and the state designed it that way, so that nobody knows for sure what they're talking about. But anyway, thank you for doing it. Thank you for having it correct, and thank you for being able to explain it, because we heard it last night, the same explanation, and tonight it's starting to sink in a little bit. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else from you?
I have nothing further, thank you.
All right. Planning Commission is on the 21st, next Wednesday at 6:30. City Council is on the 28th at 6:30. Planning Commission is on the 4th at 6:30. And the calendar is on the back. I'll make the motion to adjourn our meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Rob, aye.
Jessie, aye. Our meeting is adjourned.